Here early.
Tommy, for instance, it's the last two paragraphs are the only thing that changed on attachment two.
Call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order?
Augerby.
Here.
Calling in.
Here.
Curran.
Here.
Miaski.
Here.
Navarro.
Here. Pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion second to approve the minutes of the October fifth, twenty twenty regular meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from the October fifth, twenty twenty regular meeting.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in.
Aye.
Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Public comments on agenda items only.
I had a.
Sam.
We can't be taking emails anymore.
Wish to comment on item nine this evening, the ordinance about the termination of Oglesby Tiff Financing District, number five. Can I do that now, or should I wait until you are discussing that item?
You do that now.
Okay. I was at a council meeting one day and I heard the legal opinion that said something to the effect that when a Tiff district has excess funds, money that they cannot spend, that money should be returned to the taxing districts from whence the money came. I don't know if that will be, if there will be any extra money, because you probably transferred a lot, but I'm just wondering if that is given any consideration at all. Second item. The last report that I've seen is from fiscal twenty eighteen. We have not seen a report from fiscal twenty nineteen or fiscal twenty twenty. When will those reports be available, or do you not do this any longer?
First, the answer to your question, the first one, there is no money left in the Tiff, I do know that. The, uh, the reports will, in my understanding, be out before the end of the month.
For nineteen and twenty?
I thought nineteen, I thought nineteen was already, had been out. This is twenty.
We're still on twenty twenties.
I'm a member of the library board, we have not received a nineteen if it has.
We'll look into that with the Tiff attorney then. The Tiff attorney usually does that, I believe, so we'll figure out why we haven't gotten that.
We're in twenty right now though, right?
Yeah. I have a feeling there is a twenty nineteen.
Is he referring to the audit?
No, 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 no. It's a.
It's a report that.
The yearly Tiff reports.
Annual report.
Okay.
And I don't know why you didn't get it, Sam.
Thank you.
Ma'am, should I do the one that somebody emailed in?
Yeah, go ahead, Jason.
All right, thank you. Okay, so I did get an email that somebody had in, it kind of relates to one of the items we're talking about tonight, about the topic at least, so he'd like me to read it off. Warning, October fourteenth, I came home and there was newly placed, no parking this side, street signs placed on the west side of Jones Avenue. I'm a resident at eight eleven Jones Avenue, however, the east side of the street has always been posted, no parking. We will need one side of the street open for gas, moving personal vehicles, the like. I do understand the importance of getting emergency vehicles, delivery trucks, and service industries through the street, and have noticed on occasion vehicles parked on both sides. My personal opinion is to maintain the west side of the street to be open for parking. At the intersection of Mormon and Jones, I feel a stop sign should be placed on Jones Avenue at the now uncontrolled intersection for safety. Thanks, Chris Kohler. So, I had a talk with this gentleman, so what came up with this is when we were looking at all, especially what we're gonna vote on tonight even, but when we were looking at different parking and no parking signs throughout the city, one of the complaints I got was that because there's parking on, people are parking on Jones Avenue, they couldn't get vehicles and trucks and delivery vehicles down to Crockett. So, when I looked at it, I actually saw no signs. He claims that there's a sign there, I didn't see any sign, neither did my street department. However, the ordinance already says that there should be no parking on either side. I don't know when it was put in, it was put in somewhere between nineteen sixty and nineteen ninety-seven, so I don't know why that is. I do agree with everything else he has here in the email, and I told them we'd be looking into it. Right now, I wanna get the first set of, uh, no parking for certain sides of streets done, but then I would take a look at it, probably working with Commissioner Lewski, and seeing if, making sure emergency vehicles can still get there, because if they can, again, I don't know why it was originally put as, uh, no parking both sides, but if we can open it up for one side to be parking, we'll go ahead and do it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Move on to the next item, approved bills as presented for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve bills as presented for payment.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Next on the agenda is approval of the quarterly building permits report totaling one hundred and eighty-three thousand oh eighty-three dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, for the approval of quarterly building permit report totaling one hundred and eighty-three thousand eighty-three dollars.
I'll second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Approve ordinance one-one-three-two-dash-one-zero-one-nine-two-zero, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and the mutual release between the city of Oglesby and off- Officer Hugo Gonzalez.
We spoke about this last time, we had identified that there was a discrepancy in the pay rate that Officer Gonzalez had been receiving over the last few years. We had an outside auditor come in and do the, uh, the review, and she did indeed find a discrepancy, and we, uh, put together a release, and it was six thousand. Yes. Uh, six thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-four cents. If there are no questions, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to approve one-one-three-two-dash-one-zero-one-nine-two-zero, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a settlement agreement and mutual release between the city of Oglesby and Officer Hugo Gonzalez.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Approve ordinance one-one-three-three-dash-one-zero-one-nine-two-zero, and ordinance approving the termination of the Oglesby Tax Increment Financing Tiff District Five Redevelopment Project Area Plan and Projects.
Again, the Tiff five is expiring, so that's all we're doing is removing this from the Tiff districts. I'll make a motion to approve one-one-three-three-one-zero-one-nine-two-zero, and ordinance approving the termination of the Oglesby Tax Increment Financing District Five Redevelopment Project Area Plan and Projects.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Number ten, approve ordinance one-one-three-four-dash-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, and ordinance establishing social media policy for the city of Oglesby.
Do you wanna talk about it all, or I'll just read it?
Yeah. Did it change from last meeting?
I don't think it has. From what I read, it, it, it does a couple things. It takes away, uh, comments for all social media, and it sets some criteria for what we're allowed to, uh, post and not post, like specifically when residents contact us and ask to, to put something up on the city's page. Uh, so that way, instead of, uh, the city workers having to say no to somebody, for example, they could reference this to say why we shouldn't, or why we can't. So, I think it's a good thing. It, it limits misinformation that's going around, it makes things easier. The other thing I'm not a fan of that's happening on Facebook is a lot of people will ask questions on there, expecting the city to have to give some kind of response to something, and it's not that kind of medium for discussion. Uh, it's, it's really meant for a one-way piece of information to go out. So, I think this is a great policy, and I think it will make things better.
Is this policy only for the, the city of Oglesby's Facebook page and not inclusive of the, uh, police department?
Uh, I guess I'd refer to the attorney. I read it as both, I thought. Social media account shall mean any of the city of Oglesby's accounts or online services that allow for interaction with city residents or other stakeholders, including but not limited to Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram. So, when I see any of city, that's, I thought it was any, anybody, like if, if the Parks Department were to get one eventually, or something like that, it, I think it would count.
I, I guess I would take some exception with the, the police department, um, because they are looking actually for some feedback on certain things, and there is somebody who is actually monitoring that and, um, looking and, or making responses to. Is that correct, Doug? Yes?
Well, I, I don't think this stops us from somebody sending a question, and like if they wanted to send a, a private message into the account, they still have that, it just stops public comments. And if I'm correct, doesn't the police thing say something like contact or call, or?
Usually.
So.
Yes.
Chief?
We kind of first looked at the social media class, and, uh, there was an attorney in the class that said that it's unconstitutional based on the First Amendment to limit comments on Facebook, just so you know.
We had the attorney look into that, and I don't believe that to be accurate, because it's a limited, it's a limited public forum.
I think that perhaps is one opinion, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, when you're, when you are requesting input on something, whether it's an investigation, you're actually having them call a number, correct, not reporting it on Facebook?
Didn't, didn't this actually start coming up that, um, we, we were asked to post on a tryout for a baseball team and ran into a, uh, a hornet's nest, uh, and it got to be, you know, hey, we don't, we don't need this.
Yeah, there's, to me, this solves several things. One, we don't have to monitor for, for profanity anymore, we don't have to monitor it for libelous statements, we don't have to archive it, um, we don't have to respond to questions that's on there, um, and also, we, we limit misinformation that people have been posting and stuff. Um, to me, it's a win-win. Um, I'm not trying to stifle, uh, people's First Amendment rights. As a matter of fact, I want people to come here to talk, uh, if they have a problem or a concern with something. I, I'm not a fan of them posting it on, on Facebook, and then something's incorrect, and then there's not a way for that information to be fixed. That's just my thoughts.
I, I, I believe as long as they're able to, private message, which most people know how to do that, or when the police are looking for feedback, they're giving the phone number to call, I guess this would be fine.
Does anybody have any other questions about it, or comments, or?
Right or all?
All right.
Motion second.
I'll make a motion to approve one-one-three-four-dash-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, and ordinance establishing a social media policy for the city of Oglesby.
I'll second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Place on file ordinance number one-one-three-one-dash-one-zero-zero-nine-two-zero, and ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement for the purchase of electricity from the city of Oglesby by GTI Oglesby LLC.
We probably feel like we've been talking about this forever. Um, so, when I talked with the CFO, uh, we were originally good with the last one we placed on file, uh, but we got it in so quickly, he hasn't, they didn't have a chance for their in-house counsel to take a look at it. So, when their in-house counsel took a look at it, they had a couple recommendations to come back, and they took out some lines of ours, we wanted to add some more lines, it, it kinda went back and forth for a few days. Uh, so, on Thursday last week, I recommended, why don't we have both, because, because it sounded like we wanted the exact same things, but it was just the, the verbiage to come up with. So, we finally were able to get the, the lawyers together at four o'clock this afternoon, and the funny thing is, the only thing that changed is the last two paragraphs here, and you can see the monstro- when you get two attorneys in the room, you can see the monstrosity of what that paragraph turned into.
They get paid by the word.
They, they obviously did, because, uh, it, you know, it's, it's funny, even if we would've had their two that they took out and the two that we added in, it, the, the new one is still longer than, than, than both those combined. So, uh, it's a long paragraph, but those are the only two things that changed. Really, nothing else changes. The only thing is, the second to last paragraph that changes is, uh, they have a line in there that if the, the work is expected to exceed or anticipated to exceed a hundred and five percent of the original estimate, that we come back to them with written approval, kinda like what you suggested before with the change order.
Work order change.
Yeah, I, I thought that was good, I didn't have a problem with that. Um, I mean, even if it's one percent difference, if there's any kind of change, I'm bringing it back to them so they know. So, that was the big change for that one, and the, the other paragraph, uh, it just has more words, but it says the same thing. It basically has protections in there if they wanna expand further, and there's gonna be costs or charges from Amarin or something like that to expand for even more load or something, and that's really about it. Hopefully, this should be done, and the good news is, I talked to the CFO, uh, about an hour or so before the meeting, he was good with this. He said they were not in any kind of super rush now that we got the phase three moving, so we don't have to have a special meeting to approve this. He says by November second, that'd be, that'd be okay to do that. Anybody have any questions on it?
So, they're gonna get on their building permit now?
That, that, that was not part of the discussion.
Okay, well, I think we should let them know we'd like that done here sooner than later.
Okay, that wasn't part of the conversation I had with them. So, I'd like to make a motion to place on file one-one-three-one-dash-one-zero-zero-nine-two-zero, and ordinance authorizing the execution and, of an agreement for the purchase of electricity from the city of Oglesby by GTI Oglesby LLC.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Next, uh, I will nominate Doug Hayes, uh, for the position of Police Chief for the city of Oglesby.
Do we just vote here? Motion?
I, I make a motion to approve the mayoral nomination of Chief of Police, W. Douglas Hayes, and, uh, council vote to accept nomination.
Second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. It's not on there, uh, now it's time to swear him in as Police Chief. You come forward, Chief?
First name, not Doug?
Okay, congratulations Doug Hayes, and repeat that the need, I, Doug Hayes.
I'm Doug Hayes.
Have been appointed to the Chief of Police.
Appointed to the Chief of Police.
In the city of Oglesby.
City of Oglesby.
In the county of LaSalle, Horset.
In the county of LaSalle, Horset.
On October nineteenth, twenty twenty.
October nineteenth.
I use, I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Next up, place on file ordinance one-one-three-five-dash-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, establishing the terms of, establishing the terms of employment, including the wage structure for the Oglesby Chief of Police.
I will make a motion to place on file ordinance one-one-three-five-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, establishing the terms of employment, including the wage structure for the Oglesby Chief of Police.
I'll second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Next one is place on file ordinance one-one-three-six-dash-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, and ordinance amending chapter one-zero-point-two-four-point-zero-five-oh, stopping, standing, and parking of Title X vehicles and traffic of the city, of the Oglesby City Code.
So, again, this, uh, this ordinance is what we talked about for, we've been talking about for a while, we talked about a couple working meetings, we put out a survey, uh, we, we have a lot of support, uh, to come back, that we, these are the first of the seven streets that we're gonna turn into, uh, um, parking only on one side to open up traffic. Hopefully, we'll get a lot of feedback from it, uh, and I know there's been a lot of comments, and people wanna expand that to other streets as well in Oglesby, uh, but I figured we'd start with these seven, since they're the most, uh, kinda used, that, that don't have this feature, and we'll kinda go from there. Anybody have any questions on that? All right. Like to make a motion to place on file one-one-three-six-dash-one-one-zero-two-two-zero, and ordinance amending chapter ten dot twenty-four dot zero fifty, stopping, standing, and parking of Title X vehicles and traffic of the Oglesby City Code.
I'll second.
Augerby.
Aye.
Calling in. Curran.
Aye.
Miaski.
Aye.
Navarro.
Aye. Discuss communication hazards as outages planned and potential reporting criteria.
So, I put this on here, we more than likely, probably wanna table, we might wanna table this to a future working meeting, but we just had one, so I don't know if we wanna talk about it, it could go into quite a bit of detail. Two things, it's, it's, I think it's kind of important. One, we, we kinda are disabling comments now for, uh, for social media, and there has been some heartache back and forth about some of the way we've been reporting some of our outages lately. And I was hoping to talk about it to maybe get a little clarification. I know it's mostly my department's. We've kinda been going by what we came up with, what we agreed on, pretty much to the T, but I'm realizing there's a few deficiencies in our, our one point O that we came up with here. And I was hoping to get some feedback from the council if we should either talk about it now, or keep carrying on as we are until we have another working meeting. I don't know if anybody thought they saw any problems with how things were reported lately, or anything like that.
Well, just code red thing, but I think we can talk about that at a working meeting. Hopefully, nothing breaks in between them.
You know.
Would be the goal.
I, I kinda thought that. I, I thought that, but, but we've had a lot of crazy things happen in the last two months, and now I'm, it's like, I hate to keep going the same way we are, because there's a lot of people that I, I know that are upset the way things are.
I think the water main break was the rotor I got out a little bit faster, I think it was better, so I think we should just keep rolling out as is until.
Well, so, so the thing that's funny about that is, that is what it says in our book here, but people wanted a code red for the electrical outage, and if you look at our, the way we have our wordings for it, the code red wasn't supposed to be sent until there was a change, when there was something that was affected that we weren't aware of. So, that's why we sent it, but people want, even with this other water break that we had the other day, when the water went out at one-thirty in the morning, there's people that wanted to see a code red at one-thirty in the morning. I guarantee you, for every one resident that wants a code red at one-thirty in the morning, there's ten that don't.
Oh, yeah.
So, that's why I was hoping if, if, and again, we can talk about this at the next working meeting, I just wanted to address it here. If anybody else in the council thought there was any glaring reporting issues that we had, uh, that we could talk about now. If not, we can, I'm happy with tabling it to the next working meeting.
I feel we've been, uh, very challenged, as you said, over the last two months with the Drexel and the, the power outage, water outages, and everything else. I do feel that it probably. I do feel that it probably requires a little more in-depth discussion and would prefer to table that until we can have a working meeting.
Okay, everybody else feels the same, I'll.
I think we got table it till the next working meeting and, and people need to realize that sometimes we don't have the luxury of putting out a code red. You know, but I, I think we're doing a good job, uh, we're not perfect, nobody's perfect. But, uh, I'd entertain a, a motion to tra- table it to our next working meeting.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to table, discuss communications hazards and outage plan and potential reporting criteria for a future working meeting.
I'll second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Fallen in? Current?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Robara?
Aye. I don't think there's anything on old business. Is there any public comments?
I don't know if this would be directed towards Carrie or, but I was wondering about the siren that you put out for like the tornado, the testing every Tuesday. Is there a way, I mean, I'm sure I'm not the only one in town that works midnights and that comes on at ten AM every morning when I'm getting off of midnight. Is there a way to change the time on that to like three or four or something? Because I'm telling you, when I work twelve hours and I get to bed and I can't, that goes off and I can't get back to sleep.
I don't have an answer for that, um, so I'll have to have some discussion, but I'll certainly get back to you on that.
Okay, because certainly I'm not the only one that works midnight.
No, I'm sure.
In town of Oglesby and I know that it's right by our house.
Thank you, I'll, I'll look into it.
Commissioner reports.
I have nothing to report tonight.
Carrie?
Congratulations to Chief Doug Hayes. I'm sure he's going to do a, an excellent job as he has over the last almost six months now. That's all I have.
Alright. Um, so the water tower, the inside of the, the painting has really started. Uh, the outside, as you can see, it, it started, but the weather has really been causing some delays. Uh, high wind is some of the problems we've been having, so, um, we're, I don't have an estimated time of when that's going to be completed, but it's been kind of held up a little bit. Uh, for streets, obviously we had a break, uh, yesterday over the day. It is in our downtown district, so right now there's some gravel over it. Uh, right now, we're going to be looking to see how close we can match the asphalt. Hopefully we can get that, uh, completed this week, so it looks nice yet. Uh, LEAFAC started today, uh, goes from today all the way until twenty, uh, November, so again, please, please, if, instead of consider burning your leaves, please put them on the berm. We will definitely get around to get them picked up. Uh, Electric Department, uh, obviously we talked about this in a previous, uh, meeting with, with what happened with the, the outage that we had. Right now, we are re-engineering the mains, uh, switches for the city, uh, so that way if we had an outage on that thing, uh, that same side again, we would be, be able to better isolate without having to take the whole city down. So hopefully I'll have some news for that. Basically, we're going to be putting up a new pole with, uh, some new mains switches and then switching them over. And don't worry, if we do switch them over, we will pick a time at like two AM in the morning to make that switch over happen, so, that's all I got.
Totally.
Yeah, I have some stuff, uh, due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic, the City of Oglesby and the Parks Recreation Department, we have decided to cancel the winter programs for the twenty-twenty and twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. After reviewing mandatory guidelines, we feel it's the best and only course of action to keep the citizens of Oglesby safe, which is our number one priority. Um, I thank everybody for understanding and hope we'll see you back next season. Other news, as far as the Park Department, with the cold weather moving in, the park and recreation has begun winterizing the parks, which includes closing the bathrooms, locking the ball fields, locking the, uh, ti- uh, locking ball fields and tennis court lights and taking down the swings in the parks. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Mayor's report, the City of Oglesby has met with IVCC on annexing all the land south of the IVCC parking lot to the stoplights located uh, at two fifty-one and to the City of Oglesby. This also commits the city would agree to provide electric, water and sewer to the college property line for the expansion of the Ag offices and classrooms. The city and the IMA would work to build a solar facility at the college. That the college could incorporate into a training program, uh, generation from the solar ray would be used, uh, in the electric, uh, uh, city's grid. The city is also interested in being the college electric service provider. IVCC has agreed to allow the city to proceed in discussions with Ameren regarding this matter. We're looking to do a recycling event, uh, and we're tentatively looking at the first Saturday in April and hopefully, uh, we'll be through a lot of this, uh, uh, situation where we are now and we'll be able to do it. The City of Oglesby will host trick-or-treating Saturday, October thirty-first, two to four. There will be a drive-through for trick-or-treaters at the city parking lot, the Dickerson House and the Public Library. All attendees are to remain in their car. Trick-or-treat hours will be from five to seven. Residents who wish to participate should have their outside lights on and wear a mask. It is also recommended that gloves be worn while handing out treats. Establishing and enter and exit to each resident is encouraged. Trick-or-treaters should leave, uh, should limit group sizes to six kids and should wear protective masks. That's all I have and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Augurite?
Aye.
Fallen in? Current?
Aye.
Miaski?
Aye.
Robara?
Aye, thank you.